What next month means, but what more broadly the conversation means for our nation where we're at as a state, as a country. What we can do as individuals, what we're doing as part of groups, there's, there's a lot of opportunities out there for everyone to engage, take action. And to be a part of, of everything that's happening now in this very important time. So with that again, I will say thank you to everybody for joining us today. Hopefully that is enough time for Rick and the TV thirty four crew to have us up. So Rick, thank you so much for helping us with the broadcast. Thank you, everyone on the back end. I'll do that at the beginning here. Just thank everybody on the production side for helping to get this up and out to as many, through as many channels as possible. So we all thank you for that. So with that, I think I'll kick us off and really the impetus here is, as we know, I do a number of these town halls, but this, this one, I really wanted to take a moment because we know that in just a short week's time, Pride Month will kick off. It's an exciting time. It's an exciting time in Montclair for sure. We know that every year there is much to celebrate and much to do. And I think part of that is yes, celebrating our LGBTQ community, our, our community members. It's about bringing visibility to the continuing struggle and the fight for equality, the conversations around equity. And today I'm thrilled to be joined by some top notch advocates that are all about fighting for, for civil rights, for advocacy. And doing all they can. And I think that's, it's going to be a really interesting conversation. So thank you all at home, on your devices, wherever you are for joining us. So with the, with me today, I'm excited to have Peter Yakabels. Peter is a councilman at large and president of Out Moncler. He's serving in his first term on the council and I have the opportunity to work with him on an almost daily basis. Appreciate his advocacy, his energy and welcome him to this town hall. So Peter, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
You bet. Next, we have Kathy Rena. She's communications director for the National LGBTQ Task Force. Kathy is a veteran in the communications industry. She currently serves as the principal of Target Q. Since her time at GLAD in the nineteen nineties and early two thousands, Kathy has executed her particular expertise in crisis and strategic communications. Playing a central role in shaping nearly all major issues affecting the LGBTQ plus community. From beating, the beating death of Matthew Shepard in nineteen ninety eight, to the fight for marriage equality and the repeal of don't ask, don't tell. She worked with the team that coordinated historic coverage of World Pride Stonewall fifty, working with New York City Pride. In twenty twenty, she was part of the team that organized the historic Global Pride, a twenty six hour virtual event that was viewed by over fifty seven billion people around the globe. Early reports are, I think that's about how many we have on this webinar right now, but I have to verify that. So, but we'll, but we'll see. She is currently serving as the communications director for the National LGBTQ Task Force, and thank you so much for being with us.
It's great to be here. Awesome. Thanks.
Absolutely. Next, we have Christian Fuscarino, Executive Director of Garden State Equality. Christian has been an activist and organizer in the LGBTQ community for over a decade. His credits include Asbury Park work and helping him, he credits the Asbury Park work to helping influence him to becoming an activist. In twenty sixteen, Politicker New Jersey named Christian the second most influential advocate in New Jersey politics. And later that year, The Observer listed him on the Power One Hundred list. And I have to say, I know we're all watching those lists. I do get the updates all the time. So quite an honor. So well deserved there. At Glessen, Christian worked with high school gay straight alliances, GSAs, for several years. In two thousand and seven, Christian joined the Pride Connection Center of New Jersey as a program developer, serving gay inner city youth. That same year, he won a Student Emmy Award for, from the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences for his End the Silence Public Service Announcement. In two thousand and eight, Christian founded the Pride Network, a national leadership development nonprofit. In twenty thirteen, Christian joined the Bend the Ark as a digital strategist, a Jewish partnership for justice. They focused on mobilizing Jews to advance social issues by speaking out against injustice and inequality. One of the organization's greatest accomplishments was a campaign that resulted in California Governor Jerry Brown signing the Domestic Workers Bill of Rights. Christian serves as the communications director for the Education Alliance until twenty sixteen. The Alliance is a nonprofit organization that aims to break the cycle of poverty for low income children and families through preschool, after school, and college prep programs, and certainly understand the value of education. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you, Mayor, for reading my entire life.
I did, I did look at that. I'm like, oh, it's impressive. And I was trying to look at it to see, well, which parts do I not talk about? But it was all too good. So I'm sorry. It's all, it all got in there. But thank you so much for, for joining us. Next, Celestiori. Celeste is the founder of Trans Affirming Alliance. Celeste holds a number of appointed positions that allow them to advocate for LGBTQ rights on county and statewide scales. To name a few, they serve as trustee of the NJ SBA. They are the immediate past chair of the LGBT Rights Section of the New Jersey State Bar Association, a member of the section's Legislative Committee, the Essex Visonage Advisory Committee on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement, and the New Jersey Supreme Court Advisory Committee on Public Access to Court Records. Celeste also regularly presents on and writes about LGBTQ issues. They have written for numerous publications, including the American Bar Association, Solo, and Small Firms publication, and most recently, New Jersey Psychology's Special Section on transgender issues. Their presentation credits include cultural competency trainings at a wide variety of companies, and panels at the NJ SBA's midyear meeting, and the National LGBT Bar Association Lavender Law Conference, among many other engagements. Celeste was named the New Jersey Super Lawyers Rising Star in twenty seventeen, eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. And I have to say, when I was looking at all that, I'm like, oh, it's like every year you're, you're rising. So it's, it's a good thing there. And it was recognized as one of LGBT Bar Association's Best LGBT Lawyers Under Forty. Congratulations on all that, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you. And I realize that I am on way too many committees that have very, very long names. We have to do something about this branding. I'm going to talk to you, Kathy.
There you go. Right? Certainly helps with introductions. Shorten these things up a little, right? Okay, perfect. Danielle Earl. Danielle is an educator, writer, production, producer and director. She also serves as an advisory board member of Out Moncler. Danielle has won several awards for her work in film, including being nominated for Best Director for the LGBT Feature Film Lovers Game at the Monroe International Film Festival, and Best Writing at the Monroe International Film Festival, and won Best Actress for Crawford M. Collins at the Mount Vernon Film Festival. And thank you so much for joining us as well.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks. So I think to all of you who listen to the introductions there, you see what a great group we have, diverse set of experiences and of course, work on, on so many issues in so many, so many ways. So I wanted to get right into it. And Peter, if you don't mind, I think I'll start with you. First, thank you for the work you're doing in Montclair, you know, as, as a partner there. I know how important the work is at a local level and, and how, what an impact it can make. But in addition to your duties as counselor at large, as we've noted here, you're the president of Out Moncler, and you helped start the organization. So can you start us off, maybe and our listeners, by telling a little bit more about what Out Moncler's mission is and what you hope to accomplish through the work?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thanks for putting this together and bring, bringing all of us together. I'm excited to be joined by a couple of Out Moncler's board members, as mentioned in their bios on the call tonight as well. Look, I think, you know, for me, and, and many of you can relate to this, you know, growing up, I first discovered community in nightlife. Bars and nightclubs in the city and anywhere I saw the pride flag was a place that I felt welcome after a youth of, or growing up experience of, of being beaten and having my property vandalized and bullied, and going through experiences with conversion therapy and being discharged from the air force under don't, don't ask, don't tell. So for me, in launching Out Moncler, I was really hoping to create a safe space for, for the community in Montclair, for the broader LGBTQ community. And then in particular for youth and for seniors. So we're really excited to be rolling out at a, at a significant calendar of events. We have eleven events announced already, two more to come, just in the month of June alone for Pride Month. All on our website at outmoncler.org with focus across the board. What I love about what I'm seeing so far too is just an incredible outpouring from our business community, from our arts and culture community. Everybody wants to help in some way. And so we are just swimming in a sea of opportunity here. And so I think there's a lot of really exciting things to come. The thing I'm most excited about, what I think we're going to be able to make happen, Mayor, is I have a Pride Festival here in Montclair in June of twenty twenty two. And I think that will be a really marquee moment for the town and for the community at large. So I'm just excited overall. So thanks for having me.
No, absolutely. And I know we've had some discussions about that. That would be wonderful. You noted the eleven events that are really planned for, for just even the next month, and then of course it goes beyond. And you noted people's desire to help, right? And to be partners in the work. To those who are asking, you know, or maybe through the, the events that you're noting, what is it that you would say people can do to help, to be part of the conversation, to be part of the work? What would, what would some opportunities be?
Yeah. So go to our website first and foremost, outmoncler.org. We have a volunteer page on the site. We've got a couple key opportunities listed there where we're looking for support. So you can, you know, shoot our, an email to our volunteer coordinator who can plug you into either one of those roles or into a volunteer role at one of our many events that are coming up. You know, where you are looking for people with educator expertise and just people that, you know, parents who will feel comfortable having their teenagers, you know, stay with while they're at an event and kind of a thing, people with logistics, fundraising, event management experience. And, and we already have a great talent in terms of Kathy Rena, who's on the call tonight, in terms of communication outreach. And we're of course always looking for contributions to help fund the program, programming that we're doing, particularly the gatherings and the trips and all the stuff we have planned for Out Moncler teens and for Out Moncler seniors, which will launch later this year. And then of course, for, as I mentioned, the Pride Festival. It will be a big thing that we need to do a whole lot of fundraising for, because we know how expensive things like stages are.
I'll add to that. You and I both know, yeah, from, from the security around things, the staging, to, you know, all the things that you just don't think of goes into, well, or maybe you do think of that goes in an event. It's, it's very, it's, it's very costly. So thank you for working on that. And thank you for sharing a little of that for those who are, are listening here and, and wondering. So from a relatively new organization, a newer organization like Out Moncler, to one that has been, you know, doing great work for some time, Christian, I might go to you next. Garden State Equality is known for leading the way in New Jersey on LGBTQ rights. What are the biggest challenges facing LGBTQ residents in New Jersey that Garden State Equality would like to see addressed from a legislative perspective?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor, for having me on. Garden State Equality is in its seventeenth year now. And we have been working hard at the legislative level and also at the local community level for nearly two decades. A lot of our work today is focused on lived equality, because we can pass as many laws as we'd like, but if people aren't experiencing those laws in their lives, then we're not doing our job, right? So right now, this year legislatively, we are focused on doing HIV criminalization reform, because it's an outdated law that is affecting our community. We're looking to codify marriage equality, because right now the Supreme Court is not really stacked in our favor. And hopefully that will change. We are looking to expand the work that we're doing around LGBTQ inclusive lessons. We've been very fortunate to partner with organizations like Make It Better for Youth to develop inclusive materials that are available at www.teach.lgbt. Just recently, Governor Murphy signed the Older Adult Bill of Rights into law, which essentially will require older adult facilities to go through sensitive, sensitivity training. I'm working with the LGBTQ community. We did a statewide needs assessment about three years ago, where we went around nearly all twenty one counties and heard from LGBTQ older adults about what their experiences are like. And what we found was not surprising, but it was alarming, and that is that they face some of the highest rates of abuse in these facilities. In many cases, we were talking to folks who had spent their entire lives fighting for the rights that we enjoy today, who had to go back into the closet after their spouse passed away. And now they're being bathed, clothed, fed by a stranger who may not necessarily, sorry, may not necessarily be, it's dinner time. So that's, I'm being told that to go feed him. May not necessarily be able to enjoy those rights as they go into a facility, because they're being bathed, clothed, but, and fed by somebody who is, is prejudiced against the LGBTQ community. It's a really scary situation to be in. And so that's why this law is so important. And we're so grateful for a pro equality legislature and a pro equality governor that signed this into law. We were also, you know, Kathy, it's really an honor to be on this Zoom with you. And also Peter, for your service around don't ask, don't tell. And we were able to pass a law recently here in New Jersey, which will streamline the process for our veterans here in New Jersey to reclassify their discharge status. So while a bulk of, a bulk of that work needs to happen at the federal level, and we are hopeful with the Biden administration that we're moving in that direction. But at the state level, there are benefits and there is a process that we can now assist LGBTQ veterans in ensuring that they're entitled to the benefits that they deserve after volunteering and serving for our nation. And then, you know, just I, lastly, I'll, I'll share one of the issues that we're focused on, and it, it's an honor to be here with Celeste, because they do so much work in the space, is right now there are transgender individuals that are currently housed in correctional facilities that aren't in accordance with their gender. We just recently saw a situation come up where an individual was moved out of Edna Mahan and moved into a male facility. And luckily the state was able to take action and move that individual to a female facility in another state. But at the county level, Garden State Equality is aware of individuals that are improperly housed. And so it's really on the Department of Corrections to, to do the right thing, follow the law against discrimination, and ensure that individuals are housed in accordance with their gender. So that's just a wide variety of legislative and policy items that Garden State Equality is working on. And again, a lot of our work is also taking place in the local community level, within schools, places of work, hospital systems, to ensure that those in our community are experiencing the laws.
Well, I think that was a great, you know, you touched on a couple of things you were saying in there. First, you know, it's something I want to touch on a little bit later, but the Supreme Court, right, and that dynamic and what that looks like. So certainly I think something we want to all address. But you talked about a couple of, then you mentioned a couple of things too. Have, have you seen already, and I know it hasn't been that long, but have you seen the national political climate change at all from a, from a, from a previous, from a Donald Trump to a Joe Biden? Has it been enough time for, for you to see a difference in terms of LGBTQ rights and, and, you know, and the support that's there?
The, the difference is as intense as that sunlight that was beaming into my eyes. And now as night comes and darkness comes across.
Maybe, maybe a good analogy, the light and the dark, right?
It is that, is that, is that, is that intense, the difference? And I'm sure Kathy can speak a lot to this from her role at a national perspective. But we, we spend a lot of our time safeguarding our rights here in New Jersey over the course of the last four years. We stood with Senator Cory Booker when Donald Trump banned transgender troops from serving in the military. We worked closely with legislative partners and attorneys that had fought for marriage equality the first time to come up with legislation that would codify it here in the state. Shout out to Bill Singer and Deb Gustin for their incredible hard work on that and Tom Pro. So we, we, we were in, 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 in defense mode. We were working hard to safeguard our rights. And now it's like night and day. Where, you know, we have phone calls every few weeks with, with the new administration at the national level about how they can support us here in the states and how the states can support them at the federal level. So we, we are working hand in hand. And again, we couldn't be in a better position with a governor like Phil Murphy and an administration like the Biden Paris administration in the White House, who are working together to make both New Jersey and the, the United States of America a safer place, a more equal place, a more just place for all LGBTQ people.
Well, thank you for that. And I think on so many levels, you know, that, that, that leadership at the national level, the state level is so important. We see it in, in many different areas. So, so I, I, I concur with your analogy there. Maybe one last piece to ask you. We talked a lot, and you answer a lot about, you know, the federal level, state level. What about local governments? Is there anything that local governments can do better in support of our LGBTQ youth or, or other areas where local government can really engage in a way that can help move the needle, make a difference?
So usually, usually we kick off Pride Month with the largest Pride celebration in Asbury Park. And this year, that celebration is being moved to October tenth. And so as we are beginning to open back up, there are a lot of people that wanted to celebrate Pride. And so what we've seen is nearly fifty individual events throughout the state in local communities pop up. Pride in, in small cities in South Jersey, the good work that Peter is doing here in Out Moncler. Of course, Maplewood, South Orange, with nearly half of all of those events taking place here in Essex County. But again, it goes back to Garden State Equality and statewide groups can pass all these laws. We can, you know, work on policy. But the real work as we move forward is going to happen at the local level. When LGBTQ youth represent some of the highest rates of bullying, when they represent forty percent of the entire youth homeless population, when they are being kicked out of their homes in the middle of a pandemic, because all of a sudden they're spending more times with, time with their parents, who are not supportive and loving of their, of who they are. These local events are more important than ever, because as you heard from the Trevor Project, just one supported LGBTQ, just one supportive adult can save a young LGBTQ person's life. And so again, we can be in Trenton every single day of the week, but we won't have that impact that a local organization or a local Pride celebration will have on that young person. And so I know for sure, there are going to be young people who would not normally have had the opportunity to travel to Asbury Park for that Friday that, that will be walking down their local street in their, in their, in their, in the, their nearby neighborhood and see an entire community that supports them, that loves them, that stands with them. And so this is really going to be a magical year. It also happens to be like the month that most of our restrictions are gone. So everyone is going to be coming out this year for Pride. And it's going to be a beautiful thing to see. And it's really an honor to be in a state where so many people are stepping up in the local community and answering the call.
Thank you. And I know that in the, in one of the questions asked, the councilman, I know that they already saying, hey, we've got to coordinate the Pride Parade or any activities around others. Well, we'll shout out, we got to make sure to coordinate that with Asbury Parks Parade as well, because you're having an opportunity to go down there for a number of years. We got to make sure there's no conflict there as well. So I'll put that on the radar and put the, put the plug in, put my finger on the scale there if we can. So.
Oh gosh, just the list of, of things we had to avoid to find a date that worked.
Sure.
Yeah, but we're good. We're good.
All right, all right. I, I believe it. I believe it. Well, well, maybe Kathy, I'd go to you next in that, you know, as Christian's talking about all the laws in the world, all the different pieces are important, but it's really how that is implemented, how people, how people experience those laws. You know, what, what things are like in, in someone's individual life that matter. And as part of that, communications is crucial in moving the ball forward on civil rights of all varieties. And I, I think we would all know that as a nation, we've certainly made a lot of progress of late, but we know there's just a lot more work to be done. There's, and there's always a threat of moving backwards. I think you look around right now, what's happening in many states, in a lot of different ways, we see, you know, backwards shifting as well. So as a, as a communicator, but as a communicator and activist, how should we be framing the fright, the fight for civil rights around LGBTQ issues and protections, you know, at this time?
Well, I mean, I totally agree with what, what Christian is saying. You can have all the, the good laws in the world, but if folks don't have a lived experience of being treated with equity or equality and live in lives with pre-discrimination, then, you know, we need, we have a lot more work to do. You know, at the national level, we're working to try and pass the Equality Act, which would provide protections in employment, public accommodations, and other areas. And the interesting paradox here is that a lot of people in this country think we already have these rights, because we've made so much progress in terms of visibility. And, and in other ways, everyone knows individuals who are LGBTQ, or most do. But the fact is, we do not have those protections at the federal level. And we live in a, in a state where we have protections, but I could get in the car with my wife and drive, you know, four hours, five hours, and be somewhere where we don't have protections in the workplace. You know, the, the metaphor that we use all the time or the example is that you can, in many states, you know, more than half the states in this country, you can get married on Saturday, post pictures on Facebook on Sunday, and then get fired on Monday legally. And so there's a lot of work to do at the national level. And as, as Christian said, you know, thank goodness, we're now dealing with a completely different attitude in the White House. I mean, we couldn't imagine one more different. Not just in terms of having a place at the table, but really being part of the conversation at every level. And, and I think the interesting thing here is, you know, this is not just about LGBTQ specific issues and rights. We're, you know, the National LGBTQ Task Force in particular, and lots of other organizations, you know, we look at this through the lens of democracy. So we're not just looking at the Equality Act. We're also looking at voter suppression. We're also looking at racial equity. We're looking at reproductive rights. Those are all incredibly important to our extremely diverse LGBTQ community. And so we have, we have a lot of work to do, because as, as you said, there's a lot of backlash, you know, with success comes backlash all the time. But what we experienced in the last four years is unlike anything I think any of us have experienced in our lives. And it's been, it's been really challenging. So we're, we're coming back from that. But we're also dealing with a tremendous amount of exposed racism and homophobia and sexism. And, you know, the, the kind of prejudice that a lot of us thought we were moving past. And yet we're, we're seeing it manifest, we're seeing it manifest all the time. I think the place where we're seeing it most, and of course, the anti LGBTQ forces that are out there are constantly looking for a new scapegoat. You know, we, we have marriage equality. We, we got the repeal, don't ask, don't tell. We have job discrimination in a lot of places. And transgender and non-binary and gender non-conforming people are really sort of the new target or, or boogie person, you know, for these anti LGBTQ folks. I mean, we have, there were more than thirty states and over a hundred bills that they're trying to pass, and, and many are going through, and we're having some success and some not going through that are, you know, essentially targeting trans youth, that, you know, not allowing trans girls to play sports. And some so extreme, unfortunately, in the state my daughter lives in, in Texas, that actually have laws that have passed that, that deny trans youth access to healthcare. And if their parents support them in getting that healthcare and assistance in transitioning socially and then transitionally, otherwise, if they want to, as they get older, they can actually have their children taken away. It's really, it's extraordinary to me. The silver lining though, is that what we're seeing is we're seeing a community rise up. You know, we're seeing extraordinary visibility of not just trans and non-binary individuals, but trans and non-binary youth who are speaking out. You know, one of my, one of the most moving moments that, that I experienced this year was watching Stella Keating testify at the Senate hearing around the Equality Act, a sixteen year old transgender girl who stood up to a, a lot of transphobia coming from one side of the aisle. You know, I mean, for all the progress that we're making, and I, and I think we'll, you know, we, we see more with this administration, we're seeing things at the state level. The reality is the place where we need to do the most work is in the Senate. It's so divided. It's so entrenched. And it's going to be, it's going to be an uphill battle to, you know, pass legislation as we see, you know, that, that is supportive of civil rights, LGBTQ rights, voters' rights, reproductive rights. And so, you know, we're, we've got to, we've got to look at every part of our democracy. And, you know, we're also looking at the Supreme Court. Supreme Court is going to be coming down with a decision. Every Monday morning, we, we sit and we hit refresh over and over on SCOTUS blog to see if they've made a decision around the Fulton case, which is a LGBTQ focused case that would, you know, if the decision goes against the community, could be extremely detrimental to anyone who wants to try and access services from a religious organization that takes any funding from the government. So we're, we're looking at a lot of different issues. And we've really got our plates full. You know, things are better, but we definitely have a lot of work to do. And the New York City Pride theme this year is the fight continues. And I could not think of a more appropriate theme for what we're facing right now.
Kathy, and Mayor, if I could just jump in for one second, because I think, you know, Kathy, you and I, and I'm sure others remember in two thousand and four, when a certain political party decided to make marriage equality and constitutional bans against marriage equality or same sex marriage, the cry on call, right? The rally and cry for the religious right and for those voters to come out. You know, they used our lives. They used our lifestyle as a, as a means of dividing the country and to inspire, probably the wrong word there, but to get their voters to the polls. And we see that same thing happening again now with what you mentioned in terms of transgender folks in sports and, and scaring people about bathrooms and all sorts of, you know, horrible, horrible things. So I know this playbook. I know most of you know this playbook. We saw it in two thousand and four. We've seen other iterations of it. And, you know, I just have to say, guards up. Let's remember it.
Well, and just to finish the, the answering the question that you asked, Mayor, the reality is that communications is an integral part of all this, because it's about storytelling. Because once people get to know us as individuals and as community, we become less abstract. So the idea of these trans kids that are coming out and their families that are coming out that are supportive is something that's super, super powerful and, you know, is going to make a, a difference in the long run. In the short term, we've got some really tough fights on our hands. But in New Jersey, for example, Rebecca Bruce Hoff is a teen who lives in But in New Jersey, for example, um, Rebecca Brucehoff is a teen who lives in South Jersey, an out-trans girl. I, I think, uh, the first time I met her, she was eleven, and she was speaking at a rally when um, they appointed Betsy DeVos as the head of the Department of Education. And she started, you know, overturning all of the incredible protections the Obama administration had put in place. You know, now she's fourteen, I think, and she's doing all kinds of things to educate people. She's speaking to thousands of people at a time. She's telling her story to the media. Um, and she's an athlete and, you know, for an associated press story to go out with the story of this incredible young woman, her incredibly supportive family and her coach. It really kind of takes the air out of the balloon of the opposition because when people see us as people, it's a lot harder to hate something or have bias or dis- or discriminate against someone when you feel like you know who they are. And that, that to me is the reason that I do what I do, because it's, it's all about storytelling.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. I, I, I think that is so important and, and we know, you know, personalizing things is such a big piece of, of humanity, right? And, and what we hopefully people react to. Uh, but I, but I think what you noted and what the, the, my counsel colleague noted uh, is kind of the, the two pieces of that, right? It, it's, it's making sure people understand individual stories, but also seeing that this is, and I love how you said it as well, Kathy, in terms of this is a broader effort, right? And we're talking about the rolling back of voting rights. When we talk about the rolling back of, of LGBTQ rights, when we talk about the rolling back, it's, we've seen the shift in a positive way at the federal level, but now an even greater pushback at, at many state, in many states. Um, and, and that's where the fight is now. Um, you know, so how do you see national conversation, a lot going on? Uh, what can we do as a very progressive state with, um, you know, progressive leadership at, at all levels? Uh, what can we do to help in other states where we see the challenges, when we know how difficult it is to pass legislation through uh, a na- uh, at the national level with the Senate? You know, what, what are, what is the path to pushing back, at least in the short to medium term, uh, from some of the, the terrible, uh, you know, legislation that we're seeing in all of the circles that you were describing um, in, in some of, some of the states that we see here in the U.S.?
And I'm sure Christian can speak to this as well, because the state organizations work together. I mean, there's a, there's a equality federation of all of the state, state-level groups, and they support each other. And, you know, they, they can share information and lessons learned and resources. And the National LGBTQ Task Force does the same thing. We're working with about ten target states around the country who, you know, need support in elevating voices of people of faith, of trans people, non-binary folk, people of color, the more marginalized parts of our community and the parts of our community that people don't know as well. And so, you know, doing the work that we can to help them both in terms of if you, you want support when you're lobbying, you know, we do uh, you know, lobbying, we do phone banking, we do all that kind of stuff. We also work with folks directly in terms of giving them the opportunity to tell their stories, whether it's op-eds, media interviews. And we also work in coalition with our colleague organizations. You know, the, the, the LGBT community is, I always say, like a, a microcosm of the larger culture. We're incredibly diverse. You know, what we're, what, what all these folks on this call together are joined by, as you can see, if you look at the webinars, not, has nothing to do with our age or our race or our ethnicity or economic status. So it, it does kind of make us a microcosm of the whole culture. So it's important that we, we show that to people. And that is, uh, I wouldn't say relatively new, but it's, it wasn't happening for a long time. I mean, I worked at GLAD, uh, and our, our the torch to carry at GLAD as a media advocacy organization was not just fairness and accuracy in portraying us. It was diversity and it was showing the diversity of our community. And everything that we can do to support the states that are fighting this will, will work with and help. And, and for a lot, a lot of folks, that is simply having the support to be able to publicly tell their story and, 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 and often deal with unfortunately, the, you know, the response and consequences of that. Um, you know, the Brucehoffs can tell you stories of trolls and haters and hate mail. Um, but they continue to do the work because they really care and they know they're making a difference in the lives of other, other people.
Absolutely. Well, Celeste, this seems like a, a place to, to bring you in. Obviously, we, we, you know, everyone heard in your bio, the great work that you do in terms of the legal, uh, the legal space. Uh, so I'd like to get your take. You know, we're obviously talking a lot here about the impact of legislative actions. Uh, we've alluded to the courts, right? And certainly the Supreme Court. We know, we know what that, what that looks like now in terms of its makeup. Um, and, and, and the Supreme Court makeup now in the context of a lot of the, whether it be the anti-trans bills or some other things that we're seeing in so many states. Um, you know, that, that obviously changed the dynamic. So as an, as an attorney and advocate, what direction do you think we're headed? Uh, and how would you assess the, particularly the Supreme Court as constituted now, you know, which previously, I guess we could argue is a little bit of a backstop. You, you know, how, how do, how does that all fit together in where you think we're going and the work ahead?
Uh, thanks, Mayor, for having, uh, having me and also uh, Counselperson, uh, Yacabellus. Um, you know, it's, it's funny, when you're the lawyer on the panel, everybody asks you uh, to pontificate about what's going on at the Supreme Court level. And
Not only, you're the, you're the rising lawyer. Remember, every year, rising, rising.
Just keep rising and rising.
It rises.
I've now aged out. I'm sorry, Mayor, but I've now aged out. I cannot rise anymore. Now I just have to be super. So that's apparently the categories that we use in law, rising and super. And we deal in words for a living. I, I don't know what to tell you. Um, the list has risen. Thank you, Christian. Um, so the Supreme Court is always very interesting because there, there's, we always look to it, especially in New Jersey. And we say, okay, well, what's, what's going to go on here? And we don't necessarily focus on all of the amazing protections that New Jersey has. Um, so if you're following the, this most recent court and the Bostock opinion that came out, that was written by Justice Gorsuch, who is not known to be an LGBTQ ally. He's not known for pushing the envelope on social issues, but he took a textualist approach, which at this point, all the non-lawyers should close their eyes, lean back, because I'm going to bore you to death. And just looked at the plain meaning of the law and how it was written and yada, yada, yada. But really got to the result that we all wanted him to get to, but without saying, you know, great language like Justice Kennedy used to and talking about, you know, human dignity for all. And that is not something that Justice Gorsuch was going to say about Amy Stevens, a trans woman, and uh, Mr. Zarda, who was a gay man. Those are not words that he was going to use. He was going to look, it's almost like if you could use the back of a car contract and somehow get equal rights from that, that is really what that opinion is about. So if you haven't read it, um, that's okay, just as long as you kind of get where it's going. And what's amazing about Bostock and the Biden administration and the executive order that uh, the Biden, Joe Biden sent out to his um, his executive branch was that Bostock and its principles apply in all areas of nondiscrimination. So sexual orientation and gender identity are covered under the Fair Housing Act. They are covered in DOJ regulations. They are covered in other civil rights protections. And so now we have the federal enforcement agencies who have been told by their boss, hey, you get to enforce complaints that are being made by LGBTQ people and that implicate federal law. So I think it's like twenty-five percent of all employers receive some form of federal funding. So it, it can have really broad implications. If you're at a, if you're at an employer and you're looking around and you think to yourself, wow, are all of the the LGBT people getting the really crappy shifts? Or are we not being hired? Or are we being fired? Or I, it, our, our workforce used to be a lot more divorce, diverse, and now it's, you know, really monochrome. Those are things that you can bring to the attention of the federal government under this administration and let them use their enforcement powers to do an investigation. The EEOC, the employ- I don't know, EEOC, it's too late. I don't remember what that acronym stands for. It's just chomping at the bit to be able to, to do their jobs. Um, and I think that that is, that is really exciting from a lawyer perspective, but also somebody who gets really, really tired of feeling like you're fighting the battle by yourself. And to know that you have the backing of the federal government makes me feel like a full citizen, and I haven't in four years. Just on a personal level, I felt like I was fighting for my humanity every day. Um, and that's really unfortunate because I am an incredibly privileged human being. I am a white lawyer who can call up folks at the ACLU if I get pulled over and I don't like the traffic stop. I mean, I'm not trying to toot my own horn, but I am incredibly lucky. And so for those people that are not as privileged as I am, and I'm speaking particularly about black trans women, they are dying at plague levels, worse than just COVID. The average age of a black trans woman in the United States is thirty-six. And I think it was just recently lowered. That is absurd. We are in a first-world country and one segment of our population is dying before they reach the age of forty. And that's a, that's violence. That's not dying uh, because they have, you know, a, a disease that's not being treated. It's at the hands of other people who are lashing out in violence and murdering a segment of, we're losing a generation. We're ju- losing a generation of people that could pass on their experience. And they're, these are the same people that were leaders at Stonewall. Um, Marsha P. Johnson was out there throwing, throwing rocks. And she was protesting police injustice and standing up for all of, for all of us on this call. And, you know, her, her death still remains a mystery. Um, you know, the, I think there's a Netflix feature on it, but even, even one of our most well-known black trans women still has this, this aura of what, what exactly happened to her. And I think that making sure, to Kathy's point, making sure that everybody's stories are being told is really important. Um, and so for, for me, um, the, the murder of, or I'm sorry, the death of Ashley Moore in Newark uh, during the pandemic was something that really struck me. Um, because it was a black trans, she was a black transgender woman whose body was found. And the community was never notified. Nobody reached out to the community to say, hey, do you know this person? Um, can we, you know, really do an investigation? And uh, that was in my own backyard. And, you know, we, we're here in Essex County and we, we tout the fact that we're progressive, but yet this happens right here. And the community mobilized. Um, and the Newark Police Department responded. There was a town hall meeting. Um, they listened to concerns. They hi- they've hired a new LGBTQ liaison for the, for the Newark Police Department, who is a member of the community. Um, the, the mayor is interested, you know, the mayor of Newark is really interested in making sure he fulfills promises that were made. So I think that the community in the, the wake of George Floyd in particular, and white people waking up and saying, hey, we have to make sure that we're lifting folks up, is, is mobilizing. And that's one of the reasons why I started the Trans Affirming Alliance is because it is not, it's not a new organization, meaning it's not going to come in and reinvent the wheel. The whole part of the, the whole point of the alliance is to have uh, an alliance of other organizations that are already serving transgender people. So the Newark LGBT Center, Edge New Jersey, and plenty more. But they're already serving LGBT people. And so it's about making sure that they are able to provide the best trans-specific services to those folks that they're already serving and meeting people where they are. So one of the first things that we started was about this lived equality. And it's being able to utilize the court process to change your name on your identity documents. Um, for anybody who's ever been, I don't know, had to purchase things, um, drive, uh, get on a plane, you need to have an identity document that reflects who you are. And the New Jersey court system has done a great job in the last three or four years of looking at whether or not all people are having the same access to justice and equity when encountering the courts. And so they've lessened a lot of the requirements um, that folks have to go through in order to change their name. Because they were, those requirements were put there by court rule. Um, so that was the only place that they could be changed. They couldn't be changed through legislation or any other means. And so the, for example, the publication requirement is no longer a thing. Um, when I tell people that in order to change your name, you used to have to publish it, that your name changed twice in a newspaper, they were like, what the heck is a newspaper? Like the printed thing? Like really? Um, and yeah, you did, but not any longer. Um, and so that's one less cost and one less hurdle that trans people have to go through in order to change their names. And so what we've done is partnered with Seton Hall Law School. And we have volunteer law students who give up their, you know, half an hour, an hour of their time. Um, we've helped already twenty-five, twenty-five plus um, trans people who are just seeking assistance on how to go through the name change process. And so we have a law student who is equipped to help walk them through it. And there's a lawyer who's sitting there who can answer any questions. And just to let people know what the process should look like. And if anything deviates from it, then they should come back because maybe something's not happening in the way that it should. Um, but I know that it's changing those law students' lives because they're one, they're first-year law students. They don't get to do a lot of real interaction with people. But this is the kind of volunteering on the grassroots level that you can actually feel like you're helping somebody to move forward with your life, uh, with their lives while, you know, you gain um, just a valuable skill of being a, being a person first and then being a lawyer and then trying to combine the two. Which is, if you've encountered a lot of lawyers, sometimes that's hard for us.
Well, well, thank you for sharing that because I know that, that while, you know, for, for, for not attorneys out there, like myself, you know, you tend to think of the courts and your Supreme Court is one that always pops into mind. Uh, but thank you for bringing it back to the fact that, you know, at the federal level with the change in administration, there are a lot of, you know, good people there doing good work to help enforce the laws that are on the books and, and the protections that are in place. And there are, there are opportunities and avenues for people to reach out to get assistance. And I think that's really important. Whether it be, you know, in, in the case, the last case you ended with, at, at a more local level and, and support through uh, students uh, working towards, you know, uh, their, their degrees, but also more broadly, the different entities and agencies that are there, you know, ready to offer assistance. So I think it's important for people to remember that as well. So thank you, thank you for sharing that. Um, yeah, for another interesting perspective, so Danielle, I'm going to go to you. Um, you're a writer, director, producer, educator. Um, so I think that's a pretty unique perspective in this conversation. Uh, so I might ask you, how important is representation in culture? Maybe TV, film, music, um, for LGBTQ individuals? And in your view, how far have we come in ensuring, you know, proper representation? And how far do we have to go?
Well, hopefully I have enough time for this program because I can go. So it's like endless really with that. Um, because especially you mentioned about, I work as a producer. I have a production company, Pion Entertainment. And I also hire a lot of my students who graduated from the program, from the film program, a filmmaking teacher. Uh, you know, I do digital media filmmaking, you know, for the students and uh, for T, um, grades ten through twelfth grade at Orange High School. Um, and, and so a lot of my students are like, you know, pretty much fifty percent are LGBTQ. And a lot of the students that I hire are within the community. Um, and so, so yeah, I mean, I agree with you a hundred percent in terms of representation. I mean, when I was growing up and, and looking at uh, someone that looked like me as a filmmaker, it never was that, you know, I kind of idolized all these different, you know, films and stuff, but people didn't, you know, really look like me. And I went away to uh, study at uh, San Francisco at the Academy of Art many years ago um, at doing something totally opposite to filmmaking, but I loved it so much. But, you know, and so my professor said, yeah, when you like filmmaking, why don't you just do it, you know, to go pursue that? So late in life, like, I would say, like in my late twenties, I kind of just mid to late twenties, I went to filmmaking, started, you know, going to New York. And this is during Occupy Wall Street, you know, especially during that time is very brutal in uh, New York, you know, for kids that graduated and they're trying their best to make it. Um, so, um, but yeah, you know, I, the, the, I guess the people that I looked up to was uh, you know, Shonda Rhimes, but later in life was Lena Wade and all these different awesome, you know, writers and producers that, um, even with Lena, you know, that's pretty much was the first person that I could see that I can kind of identify or idolize, you know, look up to. Um, and it, and it's great for kids to see that, you know, and then for them to experience that. Um, but also as a, as an educator, you know, I try my best, even in the classroom, try my best to even the content that I show to the kids. And they're very much, they look at it like, wow, this person that's within the community made this, you know, project. I'm like, yeah, you know, there's people that, you know, you never think of, like The Matrix. I mean, that's a huge thing too. I mean, and uh, so a lot of the kids say, you know, like, wow, this is like something that I looked up to. So I want as much as uh, visibility in the classroom. It helps students. Um, and, um, and I think, you know, I'm hoping more, you know, um, educators do that as well. But in the film industry, even, you know, with me applying as a producer, it's, um, even for my projects. I mean, I, I've been, people have mentioned to me, oh, um, even for Lover's Game, I went to a film festival and the person was so shocked that a black person made this film because the two leads were, were white at that time. So, you know, and it was LGBT, you know, feature film. Um, so, you know, it's the humble, you know, beginnings, you know, as a filmmaker. But, um, you know, it's very important in terms of visibility. And as I get older, you know, I try my best to kind of continue that path, you know, with the projects that I produce. And um, even helping students, you know, understand that they can, you know, achieve their dreams too. And um, and hiring them, hiring them as production assistants for my company gives them that. A lot of them ended up, you know, excelling, working for really big production companies in New York and are really going far. So, um, yeah, so hopefully that's answers your question related to that. And I love what, you know, Kathy and, and Celeste mentioned about, I mean, it's, it's totally head-on, you know, if, you know, especially for white, uh, you know, people that are in the industry, you know, um, and know that, you know, they have a privilege and stuff like that, but use that privilege to do good, to help the, you know, communities, especially people of color, you know, youth, LGBTQ youth that, um, you know, Christian mentioned about, that are really struggling during this pand- that, um, you know, Christian mentioned about, that are really struggling during this pandemic. I mean, um, a lot of my students in the LGBTQ community have faced um, contemplation of suicide. Uh, family members that have been killed through um, gun violence. So it's been a tough year, just kind of, you know, going through that, teaching the kids, having an upbeat, positive, you know, attitude, you know, with them. And these kids go to school every day, you know, facing these challenges. And so, um, as I gotten older and, and I wanted to also thank Peter for having me a part of Al, um, you know, Montclair. Wonderful organization, so diverse. Um, because now that I'm getting older, I'm, you know, thirty-seven, I'm going to be thirty-seven soon. I want to try to my best to do more, you know, and I think that's kind of something that you kind of think about as you get older. You know, kind of passing that torch and helping, um, you know, our youth, the LGBTQ youth that really need it. So, um, so yeah.
Well, well, thank you for that, although I would say you were doing a good job of making me feel pretty old with your later in life decision at twenty-eight.
No, thirty, oh, thirty.
Now that you're older at thirty-seven, I mean, you gotta, you gotta stop, we gotta stop.
I'm staring now.
I love it. Um, but, but, but maybe Danielle, maybe I'll, maybe I'll stay with you because we did have a question submitted. I want to read this one for, from Natalie and uh, one of the things that she sends in, she says, so, uh, one thing I've personally been working on is changing our school policy around getting uh, teachers educated about how to support trans and non-binary students. The language currently in the policy is the school should provide teachers' education around trans students, uh, which means that they may provide education to teachers, but they don't have to. Is there any movement to strengthen the current language of New Jersey transgender guidance? Um, and how do we ensure the guidance is being followed? And, and so maybe I'll, I'll go to you to start it off because you, you know, you noted how important it is to, uh, to be having these conversations. Um, I certainly know at the uh, at the state level, um, you know, there were some changes in, in school, i- i- at the school board level in terms of making sure, um, that there are conversations and, and teaching uh, around um, LGBTQ issues. If, uh, you know, that was a, a, a push and, and a, and a successful one. But, but maybe you'd like to speak to that a little bit and maybe help answer her question.
Oh, that's a, such a great question. And thank you for having me a part of this program because it's something, it's been a challenge this year with, um, you know, a lot of teachers that are like a little bit uncomfortable with teaching it. I'm totally not, you know, I've been doing it since I started working at Orange High School. So, um, but yeah, it's, I, you know, I think um, as educators, maybe it's like they're kind of feeling a little bit of tension because of, you know, also parents and you're dealing with that element. But at our school, we've been um, definitely, you know, trying to push that in terms of the curriculum. Um, and also with uh, you know, Black History Month, uh, you know, I just want to thank Christian for being a part of that too, that LGBT Black History Doc Series that, um, who's so, you know, just welcoming and just so supportive with that. Um, and so I presented that actually to my school and um, there were some teachers that were like a little bit hesitant, you know, about it. Um, but I just think it's important. The kids want that type of content, I think, in the classroom. We just, you know, um, and we have to be the leaders and the educators to kind of open the door, you know, and welcome that. It's, you know, because I know there, a lot of the, you know, young kids, you know, they face a lot of, um, you know, in terms of bullying and just, you know, hesitant about talking about that, you know? But if you're more open and, and just welcoming towards it, you know, then they feel safe. You know, you always have to provide that safe space for them. Um, but uh, I, I do agree, I think, like, you know, in terms of other, um, you know, schools. I know, um, you know, there's other people, especially I'm a part of uh, SS County um, Education Association, LGBT Committee also. Um, and, you know, that's where they're kind of really pushing towards uh, other schools in SS County to, you know, really push that curriculum, um, you know, this year. But it's like, it's been kind of like baby steps with a lot of the teachers and administration. But, you know, I, even this year, this upcoming year, I'm trying to update my curriculum and have it kind of a all year round. Like the first day of school, talking about pronouns, you know, and, and even telling them about my pronouns, what's your pronouns, so that way. Because they all have to know this when they go into the workforce, you know? They're going to be going uh, in terms of um, being hired uh, from a trans person and they have to understand how to communicate, you know, with that person. And um, and yeah, like, you know, so, uh, you know, I agree a hundred percent, you know, trans community has to be implemented also into that, you know? Um, and we have to kind of, you know, keep it um, unified, you know, in that respect. So. Yeah, so hopefully it's that, okay.
You did, and I think it ties us to, you know, those, we all been talking about what some other states look like and some of the things that are happening and some of the backlash. But important to remember here in New Jersey, right, this was a pretty recent argument at the state board level to, to get, uh, this is part of the curriculum that, you know, successfully, there was, there was some pushback uh, at that level. So thankfully we were able to see that. And then there's the implementation piece that then has to happen and what that looks like in each of the, uh, of the schools and every, every classroom. We've seen that with the Amistad work before, you know, you get it in place, it doesn't mean it just happens, right? There's a, that lived experience everyone's been talking about, you gotta, you gotta make it happen so that that's someone's lived experience. Certainly something there. Um, I, I see another question and uh, Councilman Jacobellus, I know that we'll both get some heat if we don't get to this question. So I want to definitely uh, put, put in our question from Councilman Bob Russo, uh, who's, who's listening in and wanted to, wanted to ask, um, what can our students at Montclair State University do to help participate in all of your efforts and events? Um, and he asked for any, any guidance on that. Celeste, I know you talked a little bit about how you've seen students involved on the, on the legal side, uh, but maybe to anybody, uh, if they've got any ideas or, or specifically how uh, students at Montclair State could be involved. So Kathy?
So I had an extraordinary experience. In fact, I've still got the poster up on my wall. Um, I worked with the, with, at MSU with the um, Considering Matthew Shepard performances that happened um, a couple of years ago. And it was an incredible experience. They did three performances over the course of the weekend. They sold out the entire theater and there were about a hundred and twenty-five students on that stage singing. And obviously, you know, at, at, by the end of the weekend, probably a few thousand people had seen the, the program. And it's an incredibly moving program. It's about Matthew Shepard, who was killed in a hate crime in nineteen ninety-eight. But it was, it's about a lot more than that. It was about having a conversation around prejudice. And at the time, you know, during, with the administration that was in office, it was very, very powerful. And I saw incredible involvement by those students and uh, Dr. Buchanan, who's the choral director. And, and I, you know, I just think there's so much opportunity, Peter, um, that, you know, to bring young people into the fold uh, for, for at Montclair, but, but also for all the work that we're doing. I mean, Christian can attest to this, I'm sure as well. You know, there's a generation of young queer people coming up that, you know, they've grown up with a lot more visibility in their lives. Um, hopefully more accepting families, but at the very least, they know they're not alone. For those of us who grew up in a different time and era, I mean, I was very lucky. I have an extremely accepting family, but others don't. I mean, Peter has told his story and, and, you know, I've heard countless stories of folks who've had to deal with family rejection and uh, and, and all kinds of horrible situations, bullying. You know, your first bully should not be your parents, right? Um, and that's unfortunately, it still happens, but it's less common. And these young people that are coming up are just so much more self-assured. They are less uh, wanting to, you know, be so identity-based in terms of their, you know, their, the way they live their lives and their own lived experiences, as we keep saying. I mean, there's a lot more fluidity in the way they talk and identify. And they've let go of so much of the baggage that prior um, generations have had. So, I mean, I think colleges, high schools and, and frankly, elementary schools, kids are coming out at, you know, ten and eleven. Trans kids are coming out even younger, identifying um, as trans and non-binary. Um, and there's just so much opportunity there. And it actually, at, at the end of the day, even more than that, it gives me hope. It gives me a lot of hope that we're gonna get to a better place, um, even with the opposition that we're facing.
Well, thank you for that and, and I, you know, I like the uh, very positive, you know, position and thought there. And that we know there's some challenging times. It's easy sometimes to be a little pessimistic on things, but I think it's important to look at it in that perspective. Um, well, look, I'm mindful, we're, we're coming up on the hour here and uh, you know, nearing the end of uh, our conversation. But I wanted to maybe uh, in, in, in rapid order, maybe go around and, and hear from each of you. Um, you know, as we enter into next month, what, what are you most excited about? Um, what, what is it you're looking forward to the most? Or uh, something, you know, you find unique, you want to share, whatever, whatever that may be. I'll just quickly go around and we'll close it out there and hopefully uh, some additional upbeat, positive pieces. So uh, maybe I'll just start again, Councilman Jacobellus, go to you.
Uh, sure. Well, thanks again, Mayor, for pulling this together and for all of you for being here. This is awesome. I think what I am most excited about, you know, as a gay person, as a member of this community, I know many of you can relate to feeling isolated so much in our lives. And I couldn't think of anything more exacerbating on that than what we've been through in terms of the pandemic. So I'm really, really, really looking forward to being on the other end of the pandemic, nice weather, being out, being able to engage and interact with people. Um, I've been very concerned about uh, members of our community feeling uh, isolated. Uh, like I said, naturally already, right? And then compounded by a pandemic on top of it. So I, I think we're headed into what I hope is the next roaring twenties. Um, I'm so excited about President Biden's leadership uh, through this pandemic and what we're being set up for in terms of, I think, real success for the country and for Montclair Mayor under your leadership with the council. And I like just so excited about our potential and, and what we're doing in terms of uh, momentum uh, for this community, for the LGBT community and the community at large.
Excellent. Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, Christian, I might go to you next.
Well, uh, you know, that was a, a, a really uh, great uh, closing for you, Peter. He took part of what I was going to say.
Christian, you are, you are more than welcome to say that the mayor and council, I think was what he was saying there, has set us up for a great future. I, I, that's what I heard anyway. I think that's what I heard. So if you want to say it again, you're free to. Go ahead.
It goes without saying, uh, unfortunate the residents of Montclair are to have you as mayor and such a great council together. And with the newest addition of Peter, I, I'm so excited for Montclair. It's just a really exciting time. It's been home to Garden State Equality for many, many years. And we know that there's a vibrant LGBTQ community there. So to see the government matching the community that exists there is so important. Uh, Celeste, they've had their law firm there. I mean, look, Kathy lives there, National LGBTQ Task Force. Danielle, I mean, I, I don't even need to be on this Zoom. Um, you've got so many great folks from your city. Uh, the one thing I'll just, you know, end with is, if you're not on Garden State Equality's mailing list, please go to www.gardenstateequality.org. We're really excited about this new Contact Your Legislator tool that we just launched. If you go to our website on our homepage right now, it's about um, defending trans youth. We did have one of those anti-trans sports bills introduced here in New Jersey. Um, I know that every single person on this call will not let that pass here in our state. Certainly, it won't make it its way through the legislature, but we want to ensure that that rhetoric doesn't even exist in our state because young people are watching the news, they are hearing that this was introduced. And so we want to defend that. So you can contact your legislator through this new tool that we're very excited about. It takes about twenty seconds to fill out. Um, and if you've already filled out a form through other organizations, your information might be in there already. That's how, you know, super cool twenty twenty-one uh, it is. And for a nonprofit organization, we get really excited about that. So um, contact your legislator on our website, sign up for our email list and, and stay engaged, whether it's locally in Montclair, um, supporting the work that we're doing here in New Jersey. And then what Kathy was saying, the, what we do here in New Jersey does have an impact on other states across the nation. Like our curriculum website uh, in partnership with Make a Better Youth, www.teachlgbt, that's available to schools and states that are passing curriculum laws all across the country. And so what we do, uh, you know, what's the old saying, Trent makes the world takes? Well, um, I guess for LGBTQ issues, that's true too.
See that on the bridge all the time. So yes, I think it's true. Um, Kathy, I'll go to you next.
Um, I, I'll say something a little different. Um, I mean, I think this last year plus has taught us a lot. I mean, we're a community that knows all about when the government doesn't respond well to a pandemic, right? Um, you know, for those of us who remember the, especially the earlier years of AIDS, um, which is still, you know, a, a scourge in so many parts of our community. Again, bringing up the issue that it's parts of our community that are more marginalized. And so they're not getting the attention and the care that they need. But the silver lining of all this, if you can call it that, is to me that while we're all virtual, what we have all become is accessible. You know, youth pride is something that we do at New York City Pride. We did it uh, in twenty nineteen, we had ten thousand people in Central Park. We're doing it virtually this year and we got an email the other day from a group of queer youth in Alaska. And they're super excited to do a watch party. My daughter is fifteen, she lives in Houston, Texas. She and all of her friends, many of whom are trans and non-binary, are going to have a watch party in her, in her room with popcorn or whatever. And so in some ways, we, we were isolated, but in some ways, we've been able to be more connected. And I think that to me is about the resilience of the queer community. Is that we, we step up when something really bad happens and we figure out a way to come together. We may not agree all the time. In fact, we rarely agree on lots of things. But, but we will stick up for each other and we will stay together. And I think that that to me has been the lesson of the last, uh, you know, year plus. And hopefully, you know, as we're coming out of this, we're going to hold on to that and remember how important that was and uh, and continue to do that, that work that way, um, and continue to stay connected.
So true. Thank you. Uh, Celeste, going to you.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. And of course, I echo all of the Montclair's great sentiments. Of course, I live here, I work here, my business is here, my nonprofit is here. Um, but I just want to take this opportunity to say that we can do so much as individuals, as business owners. We can make it easier for transgender people to apply for jobs at our businesses. Um, we can say we hire transgender people. It does not matter what the name on your license says. It does not matter what your name with social security is. You tell us what your name is, we'll fill out the tax paperwork, but you can work here. And you can wear what you want to wear, no matter, you know, what your sex assigned at birth was. And I think that really putting our money where our mouth is and centering uh, especially trans voices of color is ways that we can actually do something for the most marginalized of our community. And of course, you can donate to Trans Affirming Alliance. Of course, you can volunteer your services and in-kind donations, of course. Transaffirmingalliance.org.
Well, we're all done. Well, Danielle, I'll go to you.
Oh, well, I'm happy to be a part of this whole program, um, you know, especially this summer. And I agree with Kathy, it's like, we spent the whole year sitting in front of this computer and just like virtually doing all of the, uh, you know, communications, talk to our friends, family, holidays, everything has been like this. So, you know, I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to, you know, going out and meeting people and uh, the summer. Um, I also have a meeting with the mayor at Persipity, talking about just the progress and also about, you know, doing more for LGBTQ youth in, you know, my city and my, you know, area. So, um, but yeah, you know, and also, um, you know, doing more work, especially with Al Montclair. I'm excited with that, summer events. Uh, and also NJLGBT Chamber of Commerce, I'm also a part of that uh, committee. So I always help out uh, with that. So I'm just about, you know, doing more and, and that's pretty much what this panel is about, just continuing that whole wonderful movement um, and just getting more people, you know, involved. And especially, you know, what Celeste had mentioned about, you know, um, hiring trans, uh, you know, people. And especially the first person that gave me that opportunity as a filmmaker was trans and uh, for LGBT Love Stories flew me out to LA. Uh, it was the producer, director of that segment for the L segment, LGBT Love Stories. So, um, yeah, I mean, all the people that I've worked with, it's all relative. And uh, we all have to help our community, everybody, including the T. So, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you for that. I, I, I see a comment here that I think sums us up closing out and uh, it's from Jason. He just says, uh, you know, thanking everybody uh, for such a kick butt panel, um, and an awesome discussion. So pumped, pumped for the future of civil rights in this great town. So I think that really captures it all and it really captures uh, what each and every one of you do and are doing in terms of advocating and, and moving the needle and, and engaging in so many ways. So I want to thank uh, every one of my panelists here. I, I really enjoyed the conversation. I'm sure everybody listening did as well. A big thank you for everyone who tuned in. Uh, and a thank you to everyone for, for now going out and, and trying to do something as well. So thank you very much, everybody. Thank you to all my panelists. Um, and I'll see you on the next Zoom, I'm sure, right? All right. Bye-bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Everybody, bye y'all.
Thanks, everybody.